Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilman Scott Morgan.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening Livonia. Welcome to the 2020th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting minute, meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, July 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Toy.
Here.
Councilmember Donovan.
Here.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sheel.
Here.
Vice President Tashnik.
Here. We have six members present. President McCullough is not able to be with us tonight. Before we start tonight's meeting, I would like to take a moment of silence to remember the family that went through the tragedy after the spree and what they're going through and what our city and community is going through. So if we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council held on June 16th, 2025.
So moved.
Support.
Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye, and the vote passes 6-0. The minutes are approved. The council has now set aside 30 minutes for audience communication. For items not on the agenda, do we have any audience communication? Please, when you come up, name an address and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Blair Price from Valleywood Condominiums. My address is 29491 Bobbridge in Livonia. And I'm here today, I've been in Livonia for almost 23 years at Valleywood, and most of the years, we've been paying for, and still do pay for, the salting and the plowing of the street. But they found out three years ago that the street belongs to the city, so thank you for the new pavement. So that was a wonderful thing. But it took 23 years before they found out on the map. And the same thing, we have 10 large trees on each side of Bobbridge that for all the years we've been paying for trimming, pruning, spraying, and keeping the trees. And so through a former board member and also our maintenance man that's retired, they found out on the maps that that road and the trees belong to the city. But since then, we've got a lot of dead debris falling down out of the trees. And sometimes, for years, if there was big limbs, we'd pay Arbor Tree to come and clean that up. So a lot of expense to us. But then, that's been going on for a lot of years. But now we've been getting kind of several promises over the years about there would be a response to get the dead limbs out of the trees. Last year, when I was here, I used the word trim, and I found out what, apparently they didn't think it was the right word. And me and one other neighbor, we got a little grief about how we expressed that at the meeting. And they kind of sent us a note that, well, maybe we should wait our turn. But I felt like several promises, and our maintenance man here, he has contact with somebody who's been having difficulty with communication. But we kind of feel like, you know, after 50 some years, we keep telling them, well, next year, now, I was just told recently it'll be two more years, but the stuff, and I kind of thought, well, after over 50 years of that place being there and us paying for, it'd be wonderful, and we'd really appreciate it. And so come someone, we could walk around, show them all the dead stuff, and just make it safer and cleaner for our community. Inside, is that saying enough? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, then.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Name and address, please.
My name's Kerry Whitbrock. I live at 14168 Arden Street, which is just west of Merriman and just north of Schoolcraft, and lived there 35 years. I lived over at Six Mile in Newburgh for 20 years there, or almost. So I've been in Livonia since '72. And I've always enjoyed Livonia. Obviously, I've lived here more than 50 years, and have played recreation softball, and raised two daughters, and have an interest in Livonia. And the Livonia Build Program, when it started, was a addition, not an addition, but a new senior center that was funded by money that came from the pandemic funds that were available to federal government, put out a lot of money. And we supposedly were going to get 25 million around, I don't remember the exact number, but it was going to pay for the new senior center. The senior center was going to be adjacent to the senior center with an entrance into the senior center so that seniors could access the senior center. You know, I mean, this, this sounds like free money. I know it never is free money, but I was thinking, okay, I use the recreation center on a regular basis, and I'm familiar with the building and the area they were talking about. It was maybe partly a kid's soccer field at the time, so they all could use it. And we thought that the senior center may be a good deal. Okay. The adjacent building that was going to be built soon displaced people that went to the recreation center because they were going to do something with the gym on the east side of the, of the building. And I'm thinking, well, that's not adjacent when you start moving building plans around. And they, in order to make up for this space, they're going to, they start to build another gym on the west side of the building. And I'm thinking, okay, now, this, this isn't part of the plan, but this is the way this thing's rolling. And it was rolling. It was, you know, it had a big, the mayor had a big meeting or public announcement there talking about it. And it seemed like the plans were for, first of all, the senior center, but they've grown. They've grown. And I'm, I'm just wondering about you, the City Council, that we elect to control some of the funding in this city, to, you know, need to think about the citizens and what do they want? So if, if you can just maybe ask the people what they want, it'd be different.
Sir, your time is up.
I heard it.
Okay. Council will have the opportunity to respond to some of your questions and the previous residents as well during.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, Steve King, 33950 Coventry. I want to thank all the folks who came out to Spree to enjoy my band just before the fireworks. And I want to give a shout out to Kaylee. Ever since she joined the team over there at Spree, it's been a lot smoother for me. And everything went very, very well. This Spree as an event was, overall, was excellent. And the fireworks were just unbelievable. I was supposed to open the concert series, Music from the Heart, this Thursday, but the mayor kicked me out of that slot. And she said it was because I'm a candidate, and that dog don't hunt because I've been a candidate before, and perform music from the heart. So I'm not feeling much heart. I didn't appreciate that. I want to talk about this, this proposal that the village, and what's really disturbed me about this thing is that what's happened is you're treating your citizens like customers. And when you treat citizens like customers, you're always trying to sell them something. That means politics becomes marketing, leaders become salespeople, the goal shifts from informing to persuading, from earning trust to closing a deal. Policies are packaged like products with slogans that's been designed to appeal to emotion, not understanding. The public becomes an audience to manage, not a community to empower. And when people don't buy in, they're written off as disengaged, when really they were never truly included. But if you treat citizens like people, you're trying to teach them. That means respecting their intelligence, their values, their right to shape what happens next. Teaching is honest. It takes time. It involves listening, answering questions, and sharing the why behind the what. It invites people into the process, not just the performance. It builds understanding, not just agreement. And when people feel informed and included, they don't just go along with decisions, they help make better ones. Citizens aren't customers. They're co-owners of their community. Don't just sell them a plan. Help them understand it. Invite them to shape it. That's not marketing. That's a democracy. So I hope you'll take that to heart because, you know, the line has been drawn, the signs are out there, and people are taking sides. And I, for one, I hope this village fails because then, then, and only then, will ears be open and people will be listened to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me. There's going to be people with opinions on both sides. We're not going to be doing applause. We're going to keep decorum during council tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Kathleen McIntyre, 14455 Livonia, Michigan. Thank you for having me, allowing me to be here tonight. I would like in advance to ask for an additional moment to remember a lifelong citizen of Livonia who gave so much to this community, Josie Smith. I may need an additional minute.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by Sheel. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief, but there's a lot to say about Josie Smith. Thank you very much for this opportunity to remember our dear friend Josie Smith, who passed away Sunday, June 29th, at the age of 94. In the mid-1950s, Josie and her late husband, Smitty, moved to Livonia to raise their three daughters, Bridgette, Stephanie, and Noel. And almost immediately, Josie set about doing for others. When Bridgette was in elementary school, Josie became a Girl Scout leader, starting her almost 70-year career as a volunteer, a career that lasted throughout the rest of her life up until the end. She was tireless, fearless, and posit, and relentlessly positive. She was a fierce advocate for her family, her friends, and her city. She was never too busy, too tired, or too worried about herself to give to others. The list of organizations in that she, the list of organizations and causes that she volunteered for is long and includes the Livonia Senior Center, the Housing Commission, the Clothing Depot, Commodity Food Distribution, Silver Village, Livonia Public Schools, and many others. However, her contributions to Livonia extended far beyond her official volunteer roles. She was always doing for others. It's just how she was wired. Whether it was watching other neighborhood kids, helping out at the girls' schools, helping with political campaigns, making lemonade for our Livonia police officers during Spree Week, making sure her Silver Village neighbors had groceries and food, or calling Bingo, selling 50/50 tickets at the senior parties, and she never sought or wanted credit for any of it. In 2001, when she was honored as Livonia's first citizen, and again in 2017, when she was inducted into the Livonia Hall of Fame, she said it seemed odd to be honored for doing the things that she loved to do. She may have only been honored as Livonia's first citizen in 2001, but in so many ways, she was Livonia's first citizen for many decades. Our former mayor, Jack Kirksey, used to refer to her as Livonia's mayor of senior citizens. But Jack knew that Josie's circle of friends and influence extended far beyond our senior citizen community. I could go on and on, but I know my time is limited. In closing, I would like to ask everyone to offer a prayer of gratitude for Josie Smith and all the people like her who willingly give themselves to make Livonia the wonderful community it is. I'd also like to ask for a prayer of comfort for her family and her friends. And finally, I'd like to ask people, when you want to see change or a better Livonia, can you ask yourself, how can I best make this happen? By complaining on social media, or tearing down those ideas I don't like, or literally tearing up literature I disagree with? And instead, thinking about how you can use your time and talent to bring out the best in others in our community. In other words, in short, be like Josie. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Jackie Graham, Oakview Streets. I'm actually here on behalf of the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan to remind people to purchase your tickets for our largest fundraising event of the year and Metro Detroit's largest fundraising event one of, of the year. It's called Toasting Hope Tasting Event. It is on Friday, September 19th, at the Townsend Hotel in Birmingham from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. I have been working with the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan on their volunteer committee and their leadership team for the events now for eight years. And this event raises over $100,000 for the foundation in one night. We always sell out, so get your tickets early. And just to give you a little background on the foundation, or just epilepsy alone, if you're not familiar, one in 26 people will be diagnosed with epilepsy in their lifetime, and one in 10 people will suffer a seizure at some point in their life. So I'm sure we can name off 10 people in our life. One of those people will suffer a seizure at some point in their lifetime. That's where the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan comes in to provide you the navigation, the tools, and the resources that you need to navigate that journey. And Toasting Hope will be a black tie event with all-you-can-eat chef-curated bites, beverage tastings, live music, local celebrities, silent and live auctions, photo booths, et cetera. And all of this has the goal of raising funds to help the foundation continue its mission. We also have Alicia Smith from Channel 7, who is our gracious host. Like I said, there are a limited number of tickets. We do sell out every year. If you would like more information about the event, just log on to epilepsymichigan.org, or you can email me directly at Jackie, no E, forlivonia@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb Christensen, Livonia. I wanted to, I'm really not here to shame anybody, but it would have been very nice for anybody in the City Council to have attended the vigil that was put on yesterday for the family, the Robinson family. And I would like to give a shout out to Frances Janis, who helped coordinate that for the family and for our community who is grieving with the Robinson family. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, or driving here, I noticed that there, above the flower pots on Farmington Road, there are flags that say "Livonia Built." And I wonder if that fits underneath the ordinance that was recently passed about no flags besides the city, the state, and the Wayne County. I, I, I would like the Council to be able to address that. Because if it, if it's okay to have those flags or that kind of advertisement up, then I would request that next year on Pride Month, that we put some rainbow flags up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Brockway, 14612 Melrose. I'm one of the 789 candidates running for Livonia City Council. It keeps changing and growing. Look, I just wanted to take this time to speak through the Council to everybody that is listening, just that we have a very important election that is coming up, August 5th, August 5th, August 5th. Something that I've noticed, a lot of people do not know that we have an election going on. Talked to people on the streets, they're not aware of this. So you have to make yourself aware that this election's going to be occurring. There's a huge village on there. Whether you're for it, whether you're against it, you need to do your research. There's a lot of information, disinformation, anecdote, opinion out there. You have to kind of sift through all that information and find an answer for yourself. I know I'm not personally for this village, but you need to make sure you come ready to vote and have all the information. Knowledge is power. Can I just ask that everybody exercise your right to vote with all the information that you can. August 5th, make a plan, get out there and vote.
Thank you.
Hi, Greg.
Good evening, sir.
Greg Rolco, Golf Ridge Villa. Before you start my time, I'd like to ask maybe if I could get five minutes. I don't think I'll need it, but I don't want to get gavelled because I'm here to talk about the Sheets proposition that's still, unfortunately, going forward. And I represent three subdivisions, 400 homes. So I'm asking, since we've already agreed to have more time earlier, that I could have five minutes if I need it. I don't think I will, but if I do.
Madam President.
Mr. Donovan. We knew in, before this meeting, that Josie Smith, a woman that had passed away in the community, who was a longtime volunteer, was going to need additional time. As one Councilmember, I'm okay with a lot of three minutes for items not on the agenda. And if a resident wants to talk about something specific, they could email the Council, and we can work through those traditional channels.
Council. Well, Mr. Rolco, let's see what you can do in three minutes, and then we'll go from there.
I can't believe it's been almost a year that the topic of Sheets at Eight Mile in Newburgh is still happening. I wrote an open letter to the City Council that I will be giving each of you when I finish my comments. It has a bunch of attachments that support all of, all of the arguments that I make. On May 6th, the zoning board of appeals essentially overruled your overwhelming 5 to 2 no vote denying the Sheets' request to build a gas station at the Wright-Aide Corner. At this ZBA meeting, the property owner claimed a bogus financial hardship, and the ZBA simply got played. Beyond getting played, the ZBA then erroneously granted an unprecedented and illogical local business C1 variance, creating a significant legal issue for the city in the process. How, you ask? Well, I'll tell you. The public notice and the ZBA agenda mentioned only C1 variance for a gasoline service station. But the ZBA's letter to the property owner dated May 9th granted a variance not only for a gas, gasoline service station, but also a limited carryout and drive-through window. Thus, the city needs to rescind the ZBA's May 9th letter and its variant grant, variance grant. I'll detail all this in my, in my letter, which you'll receive again. Because of my limited time, I'll bullet point these issues. But, but I, but I, I don't want to miss the point that under C1 zoning, a drive-through is prohibited. It's prohibited, okay? And all they asked for was a gasoline service station. And they went beyond, okay? So the agenda and the notice only said gasoline service station. So it was erroneous. I would say, I would even argue illegal, okay? And it needs to be rescinded. The lawyer representing the property owner that showed up that night, coincidentally, also represents Sheets. The owner's hardship that the lawyer claimed included the cost to tear down the building and prepare the soil and build the retaining wall for the Sheets' development. Sheets also included, and you can see your minutes in the planning commission meetings, that this cost was their project cost. They represented at this meeting that the owner, in order for him to rent his C1 property, he had to spend $2.4 million. The ZBA got played. And of course, we had a chance to speak, I had a chance to speak, but I don't have a chance to retort what's been said. Okay, so, and they didn't catch it.
Thank you, sir.
Which is, which is beyond me.
That's your time. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Picard. I live at 29891 Robert Drive. I just wanted to say that Livonia has a farmer's market. And I know a lot of people don't realize that. Yes, Livonia has a farmer's market. It's on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Wilson Barn. The Wilson Barn is ran by all volunteers, and we're all hard at work trying to make a great event and great community here in Livonia. It's, we have food trucks, we have kid activities every single week, we have music, we have 40 to 50 vendors, fresh fruit, fresh veggies, all that thing. And it's just a really great spot for community here in Livonia. And community means a lot to me. We have this vote coming up. There's so much, you know, sides and so many opinions on it. At the end of the day, we are all Livonia. I'm not, you know, if someone's voting differently than I am, I'm not going to look at them differently. This is, we're all one place. We're all together, and we need to be standing together at the end of the day. So I just want to say that. I want us to know that no matter what happens with this vote, you know, we have the same thing. We want to make Livonia the best place possible. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. John Schaefer, 15638 Brookfield. I had made a comment before in one of the previous City Council meetings regarding Phase 3 and Phase 4. The question that I have that I would like an answer for is, does the public get to vote on Phase 4? Because my understanding with the Phase 4 is it won't proceed unless Phase 3 passes. But once Phase 3 passes, regardless if you are for or against Phase 3, Phase 4 requires no additional voting, no additional information. So I am against Phase 4 as it has been presented, and I don't know why we can't do something like a campus marchus, where it is an open public land of our public land that we currently have. As soon as that goes into privatization, I forget how many acres will be for businesses and apartments above that. That's the part that I'm strongly against. And there's no way to vote or to influence that at all unless you vote on Phase 3. So I would love for our fire departments to be taken care of, our police department to be taken care of, City Hall, library. I am for all those things. I am against Phase 4, which, if there's no way to vote or influence Phase 4, the only way to stop that is by stopping Phase 3, and it seems very unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Council address some of your concerns during our communication. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lynn Mills, South Livonia. And I want to say something positive. Thank you for all of my new friends. I would not have them without this Bond Village proposal. And just in case you don't know, we are grassroots, and we are on the left, on the right, in the middle. We are a grassroots coalition. And only something as crazy as this Bond Village proposal would bring all of us together like this. And we are here. We're not going away. No matter what happens, on August 5th, we're sticking together and we're going forward because we're not done with the administration. Even if our very own Nicole Hefty, the grant whisperer, was able to get all of you, all of the money to fund the Bond Village, we would still oppose this plan because we don't like it. We think it's wrong. I just went out over the 4th of July weekend and looked at where you want to put the police building, the swampland. We do have swampland in Livonia. And we don't think the building, the police department, should be put over all of that swamp land. So I continue. We bought our house 43 years ago in Livonia, and it took us a long time to get it where we wanted to go. It was the ugliest house on the block. We put a lot of lipstick on that pig. We did not go to anybody else. We did not go to my parents, my husband's parents. We did not do a GoFundMe. We saved our money. We took money from the equity in our home, and it took about 30 years to get it where we wanted it to go. I'm sorry, Livonia. Some people use guns, other people use knives. The city of Livonia is using the ballot box to take from the residents. You can't do that to us. We're not going to let you. We are going to fight you every inch of the way. We are a bedroom community. That's what we are. Come up with another way. Come up with another plan. You can't do this to us. Stop taking our money. We all just got our tax bills. Thank you, Susan Nash, if you're here, for sending this out and opening the eyes of the public of what our tax bills are. And they're going to do nothing but go up. Please, stop taking our money. Thank you very much for listening. We, we do appreciate all the work you do, but our money is our money, and stop taking it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. We talked about that.
Dave Piantic, 30432 Bobbridge. I'm asking the Council to take a resolution today to rename Rotary Park. It's about time. It's been about a year, over a year. I, I think we should rename Rotary Park to the Historic Rooms of Rotary Park. And you'll get a lot more tourists over there. I have a Facebook group. You can look it up, Historic Rooms of Rotary Park. Since they moved the music. Since they moved the music from the rec center, they can take it to Rotary Park. There's great acoustics at that aluminum awning. Oh my gosh, it is awesome. So, yes, I'm being sarcastic, but golly, if I was, I'm embarrassed for Rotary Park, I really am. It's been over a year, and if I was in leadership, I would be like the old Lions, you know, the old Lions fan. When you go there, you put that bag on your head, you cut the eyes out, because it is so embarrassing to have Rotary Park. Livonia is a top-notch city. All the other cities that lost pavilions, they're all rebuilt, all of them. Rotary Park is not. And if nothing else, take the court workers. Take the fence down, bring a bunch of sand in, level it, and bring in some little tiny dump trucks for the kids. It is, like I said, take that little awning down, you're going to rebuild it? Even more embarrassing. So, anyway, I appreciate your time. Vote no. Have a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, I think you took cuts in front of the ma'am, lady right behind you.
Oh, well, okay. I saw her standing way back there, ma'am, I thought she was gathering her thoughts.
Yeah. Also, just so everyone's aware, our 30 minutes of an audience communication is almost up. You'll be our last speaker now, we'll have time at the end of the meeting as well.
There you go. That was it.
No, that was not intended. This was definitely, she was there.
That's, there you go.
Ma'am, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you for recognizing me. My name, last name is Brown, Emerson Oaks Community. June 6th, the president of the HOA came before the council to ask to withhold the bond, so I'm going to reiterate that. We are up to a year and a half, and all things have not been completed over there, so I'm going to request that as well. This developer has not done what they said they should do, they have not done what they are obligated to do, and I would like the bond withheld until it's done. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
All right. We do have unlimited time for audience communication at the end of the regular meeting, and we're going to proceed on to the regular with council announcements first. A couple of things before we go to the rest of council. I just wanted to wish Treasurer Nash a happy birthday. Her birthday is coming up on July 14th. Also, we will have a Capitol Outlay Meeting on July 9th, that's this Wednesday, at 7:00 PM in council chambers, and I'm sure we'll talk about that a little bit more. Counsel.
Mr. Morgan.
Yep, I would just like to congratulate Captain Yan, Greg Yan, retiring from the police department after 38 years of service and nine months. Longstanding excellent reputation for the city of Livonia, and he's a really good person and a good friend. He's done a long time there, and it's time for him to move into retirement. So, I'd like to congratulate him, and thank you very much for your service, Greg Yan. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Buzinski.
Yes, I have a few things. One, to the resident from Bobberich Street with questions regarding tree trimming, if you could email council@livonia.gov, that would go to all of us, and we can follow up on your concerns and questions there. And, you know, there are a lot of conversations, and I'm going to address the questions that we got directly regarding the upcoming bond proposal, and also just general announcements that I normally do, which is, one, I have a coffee hour this coming Saturday at the library, Saturday, 11 o'clock, I bring Looney Donuts, I have drinks, everyone is welcomed. I give a general council update, and I take questions. This is something I've done every single month since I've been on council. You know, I do printouts at the meetings, I do email, long emails these days on the Sunday before my coffee hour as a reminder, and again, as an update of council meetings, I summarize all council meetings on my Facebook page so that people can have the information easily about what's going on in our city, so that they know how to reach me and can engage in the process. It is not one issue only. There are a lot of things that happen in our community, and there are a lot of issues that are brought up during my coffee hours that we're able to work for solutions and, you know, start making pathways for. I do think resident engagement is very important, and I personally have made it a priority to be available to anyone who asks questions. So, first and foremost, if you have questions, reach out to me anytime. My city email is cbazinski@livonia.gov. I also try to create spaces for specific issues as they come up. When we've had questions about fire safety, I've done fire safety talks. We have questions about recycling. I've done multiple recycling 101 workshops for the general public, for our seniors specifically. You know, we have 17 active candidates running for city council, and my coffee hour in May, I hosted a forum so that all of those candidates would have a platform to speak and meet with residents. Martha and I have been doing talks to help provide space to answer questions about the bond. We have, we had one last Monday, we have another one tomorrow at 1 o'clock at the Senior Center. The Senior Center is for individuals 55 years or older, so please keep that in mind if you want to come. But I also recorded Facebook Live on June 17th, where I did, went through basically the same PowerPoint presentation that we go through to answer regularly, ask questions, go through every step of the process, and again, it was a live where I was taking questions. You know, again, I'm trying to be as communicative and as possible in sharing information, and not changing anyone's mind, but helping those who are looking for information to get the information that they need. So, in terms of some of the questions that were asked this evening, one, Phase 4, the reality is Vision 21 that, you know, has set, you know, that is our city plan, it's set in 2018, really, the trajectory of where we are going, for a development at 5 and Farmington. The development at 5 and Farmington is quite honestly unrelated to this bond proposal. So, for the gentleman who said stopping Phase 3 for Phase 4, Phase 4, if we're breaking it up in that kind of way, is where the senior center is being moved from, and the City Hall is being moved by a no new tax bond. Those things are already in the works. So, development at that site is likely to occur. There's no active plans for it. I can't share more than that this has been the set direction from Vision 21, and, you know, that would be coming through council, it'd be going through the planning commission, it'd be going through other development phases that we normally go through as a community. You know, so that, I hope, clarifies some of the things about the development that was mentioned. The banners that line the street, those change regularly. For One City, One Book is what they have up on 5 Mile and Farmington during the fall for the library program. We don't have a local newspaper, you know, we don't have a lot of media outlets to share information like we used to 20 years ago. So, one of the criticisms that we often get is people don't know about the plan. Well, the banners, the stands inside our different public buildings, that is how the city can share information with the public about what is happening. You know, we had a tent at the Spree, you know. Otherwise, how do people get that information? You know, you can't say that we're keeping it from people, and then also be critical of the ways that that information is being put out there. You know, it's being put out there so that people say, hey, what is that? And then they go look for more information. Now, if you want that additional information, the livoniabuilt.org is the website. There's also a tax calculator. It can tell you specifically to your address what the tax increase would look like. For most residents in our community, it would be $12 or less. I believe those were the questions that were specifically asked during public comments. Again, if you have questions, please reach out anytime. My email is cbazinski@livonia.gov. If you are 55 years or older and you would like to come and talk to me and Martha, and I know some of my other colleagues are going to try to come as well about this proposal, come to the Senior Center tomorrow at 1 o'clock. If you would, you know, can't make that, or if you're under 55, please come to my coffee hour on Saturday at 11 o'clock at the Civic Center Library. Kids are welcome. Everyone is welcomed. I've got no other plans, I can stay as long as you'd like to talk. And just, I will circle back to the Senior Center, I know that was another, that's unrelated, of course, to the bond, but it was mentioned, to just say that project is on budget, it is on track. The plan was always to include updates to the recreation center. Quite frankly, it's a really creative way that can benefit our entire community because funds that were noted, ARPA funds among them, you know, were only available to us for senior-related entities. By removing a portion of the rec center, instead of building a standalone senior center, we were able to then invest some of that money into the recreation center that can benefit our entire community. Now, you know, there are certainly some disruptions to service at the rec center. As a rec center attendee, I know and understand, but that was always part of the plan. The senior center component of that project is, again, on budget, on on track for September opening, and then the rec center completion would be later this year or early in 2026. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, gosh, there were so many things tonight that, first of all, I want to start with Josie Smith. I think former Councilwoman McIntyre did a super job in describing Josie. I had the pleasure of hiring Josie at my store, and while she wasn't a designer like most of you on the end there, she certainly did a great job in making a lot of Livonians happy with the flowers and her warm personality and her compassion for people. So, she's been, she will be greatly missed. A lot of us, she worked on our campaigns tirelessly, I mean, she was there and believed in many of us, and not all of us, but many of us, and she had her opinions, and I appreciate that. People aren't always going to agree with you, we all know that. So, and I'm sorry I missed the memorial last night. I was out of town, but I know that Frances Janis did a super job of organizing that, and we appreciate that. We need many more of those because I know that the mother is still very ill in the hospital. And so, we do need to pray and send our blessings to that family. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Greg Roscoe for this nice packet that'll put me to sleep tonight, no, not really, but in all sincerity, this is a deep issue for many communities, ours included, and so, I'll review that, and you can't get all that information out, even if you gave him five more minutes, it would have been, it would have been something else. I also, when this election comes up on August 5th, I've already voted, I don't know if any of you have yet, but I just want to say, this council had the vision to go ahead and allow, not only allow, that's the wrong word, but to place it in front of all the voters so that we got many opinions on it, which I appreciate it, and make up your mind how you want to vote. That's the most important thing, and I think one of the speakers said that. And I think that many times when I've served over the years, people complain, you guys make the decisions, we don't get input other than coming here for a few minutes, okay? So, now you have every right to go out there and voice however you want to voice that. Just be polite, be respectful of each other, and as the word goes, be kind to each other. We're all in it together, but please, you know, just remember to vote. However you're going to vote, I know our clerk is having, aren't you having a couple days, Lori, I'm sorry? Could you help me out on the dates on when open voting is here in City Hall?
Oh, early voting.
Early voting.
Early voting will be the Saturday and Sunday before the elections, so Saturday, August, let me make sure, 2nd, and Sunday, August 3rd, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM here in the lobby at City Hall.
So, there's another opportunity that we're, that the clerk and all of us are providing for that. So, you know, exercise your right to vote, and get out there no matter what you believe and how you believe it. Please do that, and we'll be a better community for it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for chairing the meeting. I know that people want to talk and have their voices heard, that's all important, but the council does have rules, and the council chair right now is not selectively enforcing these rules, the same rules have been in place for a very long time, and we have to run meetings and get to official business, so I do appreciate it. I also want to thank Kathleen McIntyre for those kind words for Josie. I've had the pleasure of meeting her a few times over the years. I know Kathleen and also Councilwoman Toy have known her for decades in some instances, but I had the pleasure of meeting her, and she was a ball of energy, a very sweet lady, and she didn't mince words, she told you what she was on her mind, and I always appreciate that about her, so God rest her soul. I also wanted to touch on a few things related to the bond. You know, this is a regular meeting, we have a ton of agenda items to get to, so I'm going to be brief. I'm going to be brief because we've talked about this at length. There's been 15, I want to say 15 committee meetings over the last few years that speak to the Civic Center Campus Project. All those meetings are open to the public. We are having another meeting this Wednesday. The council vice president mentioned that, that meeting again is open to the public, that is 7:00 PM start time, and they'll be discussing the Civic Center Campus and some of the updated plans that we've received from some of the vendors that have been approved. So, if you want to attend, you're more than welcome, that is 7:00 PM this Wednesday. I know there's a question that I've heard a few times about the Phase 3 and Phase 4, and how some of the sequencing of this project will happen. Ultimately, this vote is for the Municipal Facilities Millage. Irrespective of future development plans and what the future of 5 and Farmington could look like, the millage specifically identifies a critical municipal facility, just these municipal buildings that the city council started looking at and analyzing back in 2023. We went out for a space needs assessment, we talked to department heads, we talked to the respective employees and staff, we talked to members in the community, we talked to vendors, and determined that these buildings were of the greatest need, we spent the most money there, and how do we solve these problems? So, that is what the Municipal Facilities Millage covers, just those buildings. Now, to Councilwoman Buzinski's point earlier, Livonia Vision 21, that is the overarching master plan. That is the guiding principle for what we as a city do with zoning, all things zoning, commercial, residential, and so on. And that plan specifically called out a few areas within Livonia. One of those areas was 5 Mile and Farmington for the future redevelopment of 5 Mile and Farmington. Residents participated in that, it was a long process, and the city council ultimately adopted, unanimously adopted Livonia Vision 21, I think in 2020, 2021, give or take. So, now we are sort of in the implementation mode of Vision 21. And yes, if the millage doesn't pass, then it, you know, what is the future of 5 Mile and Farmington? You know, I don't know, that's a long process. But nonetheless, the, if the vision, if the Vision 21 is still here, it's not disappearing all of a sudden, and the city council has to vote on a whole host of things when it comes to the redevelopment of 5 Mile and Farmington. While the guiding principles of Vision 21 have been implemented, while it's, you know, in black and white, and that's what we do, that's what we believe in, as a city council, as a city, the city council still has to vote on site plans, has to vote on all things master plan of the entire campus. We've talked about whether we're selling land or leasing land, there's so much more that goes into it. It's not just a decision that is made overnight, and neither was the bond proposal. Again, we've had 15, I think now it's going to be the 16th meeting, this has been ongoing for years, so none of these decisions are just made overnight. Every single one of us have disagreements, just like us in the community do. Some people want it, pass it, some people don't want to pass it, like Councilwoman Toy said, just get out and vote, you know? Ultimately, the public gets to decide if this loan, this bond, is approved or not. If it's approved, great. If it's not, great. You know, the residents decide, and the public gets to make their decision, and I believe that that's okay, and the public gets to make their decision. Alls we can do as council members, and as me specifically, the chairman of the Capitol Island Infrastructure, I've just made up my point to make sure that information's available. You know, again, whether you agree with or disagree with it, you can go right to the city council website, you can look up agendas, you can look up packets, all the same information that we as council get, that we negotiate back and forth with administration. There's been tons of meetings with administration, and our bond council, and our department heads, and different vendors, and so on, a negotiation amongst council, the list goes on. So, whatever you do, you know, whether you support it or don't support it, you know, that's okay with me, just go out and vote, and, you know, if you have questions, I know some of the people asked questions tonight, we can only do our best here to answer them in this brief moment, and I'm talking too long as it is, but if you have any questions, it is my job, whether you like me or not, it is what it is. But if you have a question, you can reach out to me, and I will do my very best to answer it. If I cannot answer it, I'll always make sure to get that information to you at the best of my availability, and I know other council members, if you don't like me, you can always ask another council member, maybe better luck there, so. Thanks, Madam Vice President, appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Just a couple of quick things before we continue on with the meeting. The one issue that did come up with the ZBA asking council, council does not have The one issue that did come up with the ZBA asking council, council does not have the ability to override a decision by ZBA. ZBA is a separate body. Even though we appoint ZBA members and we vote them in, any decision by the ZBA has to go to circuit court. So, that is, that is not up to us, just to clarify that. Couple of things real quick, too, and then we'll move on. I know the clerk just mentioned a minute ago, we have the early voting, the Saturday, Saturday and Sunday prior to?
Yes.
The Tuesday? Okay. A couple of people have mentioned that they have difficulty getting into this current City Hall. You will have curb side voting available. They just have to call, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We do that all 45 days before every election.
Okay, so all 45 days, you can pull up, make a call, and someone will come out and assist you with that.
Absolutely.
So, we want to make sure that everyone knows that they do have the right to vote, no matter, you know, we understand that City Hall is difficult to get into for some of our residents. Tomorrow, and I know Mrs. Bozinski mentioned this, we are going to be at the senior center at 1:00 p.m. I'm going to be doing a math lesson. I know that's really appealing for everyone to come and see on how this works. As the chair of the Finance and Budget Committee, I'm kind of a subject matter expert, I guess, on the math, right? So, we will be doing that tomorrow at 1:00. We'd love to see as many of you join us as possible, and it should be a good time. So, with that, let's get into the meeting. All right. Reports from the mayor and other city officials. We've received a communication from the Department of Finance dated June 2nd, 2025. It's just forwarding the departmental purchases report for the month's ending, April 30th of 2025 and May 31st of 2025. So, that is a receive and file for us. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Donavich.
Can you remove item number three and add that to unfinished business? There are some clerical errors that need to be addressed.
Okay, so we are going to remove number three from the consent agenda, and we will put that right before the unfinished business after we do the consent agenda. Okay. So, moving back onto the consent agenda, items one through nine excluding number three will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on July 16th, 2025, and determined to be non-controversial.
So?
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by Bozinski. Do I have any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved, passing six oh. All right, we'll now move on to unfinished business, and we'll start now with number three, which is an award of contract from the Department of Finance for a three-year, it says three-year agreement to replace our current credit card program and transition to a procurement card program. Mr. Fisher, I think you're going to address this one.
Madam President?
Yes.
How often approving?
Okay. Support. Approving from Donavich, support from Toy. Now, we go to Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. So, this is just a pretty standard P-card agreement that we do with Huntington Bank. However, the finance letter and the resolution erroneously stated that it's for a three-year term. The term is actually one year with an automatic renewal, but we have 30 days notice that we can cancel at any time, essentially. So, it's a, it doesn't have a firm end date. We have the ability to cancel, again, with 30 days notice if we have some issue with the service being provided by Huntington Bank. So, we just wanted to clarify that in the motion, that there's not actually a three-year agreement in place. It's a rolling one-year agreement with a 30-day cancellation period.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavich.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Carter, Fisher, or City Attorney, thanks for that clarification. I do appreciate it. I guess my question is, is if it's an automatic renewal, what is the renewal amount? And will that hit the council thresholds?
So, the P-cards actually tend to pay us a fee. So, it won't, there won't be an issue in terms of council thresholds. Yeah, there won't be.
Okay, so we wouldn't be violating any sort of financial ordinance and appropriation of dollars and expenditures and whatnot?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Anyone else from council? Mrs. Scheel.
So, are there any fees associated with this P-card right now that could change? And like when they come to renew it for a year, the fees could change?
The fee structure, if it were to change, would require an amendment.
And would that require it coming back to council?
It would come back to council, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from council? Do we have any comments from the audience on this issue? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. Motion passes six nothing. All right, now we'll move back to the traditional unfinished business, starting back with agenda item number 10. This is for a waiver use petition from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2025-04-02-09, submitted by Costco Wholesale Corporation requesting waiver use approval to expand the existing fuel facility and parking lot at the Costco Wholesale at 19540 Hagerty Road, locating at the southeast corner of Hagerty Road and Eight Mile in the northwest corner of Section 6. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Scheel?
Motion to approve.
Yep, support.
Okay. Motion by Scheel, support by Morgan. Counsel.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much. I believe this gentleman's a representative from Costco. You know, my, my memory's failing me, surprise, surprise. And so, I guess what I wanted to ask is, I was just over there today getting gas, and I mean, you guys are packed to the gill. So, it's needed. I'm not questioning that.
Absolutely.
I just, I, I remember being on council when we put this in. And all I'm saying is, what, refresh my memory, what side are you looking at? Because I know there's wetlands or a retention pond or something in the front there, right?
Correct. Again, for the record, Larry Jurcik with Costco Wholesale, 1955 Raymond Drive in North Park, Illinois. That's a stormwater detention basin to the south of us.
Yes.
So, we're not developing into that.
Right.
We're actually purchasing that property. We'll maintain it. We're expanding to the east with the gas and to the north. So, we're actually putting some new pumps into the queue. And so, the whole thought process there is that cars that are waiting right now, not in front of a pump, will now be in front of a pump. And based on our research throughout the country, that's going to expedite and move the queue faster and move this line faster.
The flow will move faster.
That's right, absolutely.
And is it going to be limited to two pumps per island, for lack of a better way to put it, or station?
That's correct. One pump has two fuel dispensers on each side. So, we have 16 right now, and we're going to increase it to 30. So, it's quite a bit.
That is quite a bit.
Yes.
Wow. Okay, so you sell that much gas, huh?
We do.
You do?
We do. We do, to put it lightly, yes.
Wow, okay. Well, I made your trip from Illinois. At least we got a couple of questions. Already, well, that's quite a few gas pumps. I guess we won't be waiting too long, Madam Chair, for getting gas anymore. If this passes, of course. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Donavich.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight. I know we had a good conversation with you and I believe the store manager earlier. And it'll be nice to, if this passes, to alleviate some of that traffic and congestion in that area. Hopefully gets people through the queue faster. I do want to appreciate you both and the manager there for talking about the abandoned shopping carts. You know, we've had an issue with some of our retailers in Livonia where there's abandoned shopping carts in the corner, two, three, four blocks away, a mile away from their retailer, and you both took that seriously and formulated a plan to make sure that that's not an issue at your, both of your stores here in Livonia. And I do appreciate that. It's an issue. They blow out in the middle of the street. Cars hit them. They end up abandoned on the side of a sidewalk tipped over, full of trash and whatnot, just not appealing for our community. So, I just wanted to appreciate you and say thank you publicly.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Toy.
Just real quick to Larry. I forget your last name, Larry.
Jurcik.
Churchill?
Jurcik.
Oh, Churchill, okay. I thought you might, yeah, okay. What I wanted to ask is, we also have another Costco in our community, which I'm sure you're aware, on Middlebelt and Schoolcraft.
Of course.
Is there any plans to look at that? There's limited amount of room over there, I know. Are you trying to get everybody to come to your 30 gas pumps over on?
Oh, no, 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 absolutely not. No, no, but, but there are, there are plans for some improvements there. I can't get into detail tonight, but, but very shortly, we'll be submitting an application for that store. But yeah, that's going to improve it tremendously.
Well, don't take Outback out or, you know. Okay, thank you. You know, his hot dogs are good, but you know, we, whatever.
You all say?
I think I'm all saying, yes, ma'am.
Is there anything else from the audience? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. Motion passes six nothing.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item agenda number 11, site plan petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2025-03-08-02, submitted by Kareem Alrez, requesting approval of all plans to expand an existing commercial building by constructing a new two-story addition at 29440 Schoolcraft Road, located at the northwest corner of Schoolcraft Road and Middlebelt Road in the southeast quarter of Section 23.
How often approving?
I'll support forsaken discussion.
So, we have a motion to approve by Morgan, support by Toy.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. If I may to the petitioner, sir, in the last.
Hold on one second. Just could you introduce yourself and?
Kareem Alrez, 294460 Schoolcraft.
Thank you.
Mr. Alrez, in one of our meetings, I'm forgetting which one at the moment, you had mentioned that you didn't approach the neighbors. And a couple of my colleagues and I talked about that today. And I'm concerned that a lot of times when we approve different site plans and different venues of things in our community, all of a sudden, people come back at us after the vote or whatever. And it, no offense, it can be very embarrassing and hard to explain, even though we dive deep into a lot of these subjects and topics. But have you had the opportunity to go door to door and maybe talk to the folks and tell them what you're doing there on your site, sir?
To be honest with you, no, because my business is not noisy business. It's just a showroom. If it was a noisy, you are right. I will go address for all this resident there, what kind of business I'm going to open there. This is the only reason.
I'm trying to remember.
I don't have any production, anything there. It's just a showroom.
Right.
Even I don't have a storage. It's not a warehouse.
Okay. Do you have any windows back there? I mean, even you're going to change the height of that building. Am I right on that?
I don't have any window. Last time, Mr. Morgan, he suggests in the second floor, I was have windows, and we canceled, like we closed. There's no window at all facing the residence.
I'm not saying windows are a bad thing. I just meant you are going to go up, right? I mean, you're adding.
Yes.
That. So, that changes the sight of the folks, if you know what I'm saying. You know, as they look out their backyard, I'm sure their fences are two stories high. But I just, again, I just wondered if you had the opportunity to talk to any of the neighbors in the area. And it sounds like you have not, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I am not.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else on council?
Madam Vice President?
Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. To our planning director, Mr. Toramina, thanks for that new data. I appreciate your department's help on this. When reviewing the site plan, it talks about the giant emerald trees that will be added along the western border. And I think in some conversations, you, you said there should be 40 trees planted. Did I hear that right? Go ahead, sir.
I have 24, because I have like, yes, every four feet, we put one.
Okay, and on the plan, it notates a tree at four foot on center. How tall would those trees? Are you going to buy the little ones that you buy from the store that are a foot tall and take 10 years to grow? Or are these going to be more mature trees?
No, more mature.
Okay. Mr. Toramina, what sort of assurances do we have that they're, you know, more mature trees planted from the very beginning?
You would specify the height at planting. I believe it's not indicated in the prepared resolution, but we would recommend at least six feet.
Okay.
At time of planting.
So, procedurally to the maker of the motion, if we could have the, that added to the motion that the trees be planted, at planting be six feet in height at planting?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
A couple of other changes that are reflected in the new plans. The building has been moved to have a 20-foot setback from the side lot line now. So, previously, it was shown 10 feet from that residential lot line. Now, it's 20 feet. The windows were eliminated as indicated. The additional plantings were on the west property line, and then grass paper blocks have been added in that area between the building and the fence line to provide not only emergency access around a building, but also access to the AT&amp;T equipment building at the back of the property.
To the maker of the motion, would that motion maker be okay with the trees being planted at six feet at planting?
Yes, that would be fine.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Martin, sir, if you could just step aside for a minute?
Yep.
You have two minutes.
Make sure, make sure no one's behind me. He's standing in line supposedly. But I didn't like the way that this gentleman was treated the last time he was here. And the guy's coming in here, and the building's going to be renovated. Yes, there's two stories, Laura Toy, not three, okay? You were confused this is the last time. But I thought Mark Teramina did a pretty good job on explaining just exactly the height of the building along with renderings that were there. Now, Mr., young Mr. Donavich was insisted on the trees being planted, and he can laugh, okay? Michigan law does not recognize a general right to a view for property owners. And that was brought up a lot. Well, they're going to look at your building because it's going to be taller. In Michigan, it doesn't make any difference. The guy owns the property. Somebody does. They're going to renovate it. That's it. You don't have the view of someone else's property, okay? That's just the way life is. My property up north on Lake Shore Drive, I look at Lake Michigan. I own it. That 180 feet is mine. I watch the sunset in Lake Michigan. I own the lake bed. Nobody can build anything there. I own that view. The neighbors don't own the view. It's pretty simple. You want him to plant trees here, all concerned about, have you talked to the neighbors? This guy doesn't have to talk to the neighbors. He doesn't have to. Now, you might like him to, and he might request that, but he doesn't have to. He doesn't need the approval of his neighbors necessarily. He needs your approval.
Thank you.
And I hope you approve it.
Good evening. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Faneimer Burton Hollow in Livonia. I wasn't here the last council meeting to witness how this gentleman behind me was treated, but I have seen how Sheetz Gas Station has been treated and the backdoor deals that have been happening with Sheetz. It's quite unfortunate. I will speak to it in my later comments in more elaborate terms. However, if the property as currently zoned for Mr. Alrez stipulates that he's able to go that additional floor, if there is no public notice that is required to any residents within 300 feet of the parcel, then he should be able to just get the approval of this body, which he is, has been trying to do, attempting to do, to improve a parcel within the bounds of the city, but being constantly challenged. I have never heard Sheetz being questioned about the height of the trees that they're going to plant. I would love to see that kind of scrutiny from, from this body, specifically the two individuals who did not vote in favor of the denial of their motion at the last meeting. But I, I speak to the equity in the situation, the violation of the constitutional rights of the gentleman behind me, the developer who is trying to improve upon the parcel within the city of Livonia. Just kind of take that into consideration. Equity matters. Treating a small business owner, a small mom and pop shop differently and scrutinizing them a lot more than you would a corporate chain is a constitutional violation. So, I just want to remind this body of that, and I, I yield to you to, I yield to you to, and I encourage you to approve an improvement within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. So right now for the residents watching, we are discussing a site plan and the city council has certain authority over various things that happen during a site plan. Exterior facades, parking lots, fences, signage, you name it. We're in the site plan phase right now. Now, I know Sheetz was brought up even though it has nothing to do with this proposal that we're currently discussing. Sheetz was never before the city council for a site plan. We've never discussed any particulars pertaining to Sheetz other than the zoning portion. Zoning is different than site plan. Those are handled separately from one another. So right now, we don't have to rezone this property. So we're not talking about the actual zoning of this individual property, but we are talking about the site plan portion of it. And I think, at least for one council member, it is important to think about what the neighbors have to deal with when they have been used to a one-story building adjacent to their home. Now it's going to be a two-story building adjacent to their home. It's my job as a city councilman to ask these questions and how they can or cannot impact homeowners. These backyards in particular are very close. They're small backyards. They're very small, so the home is very close to this adjacent commercial property. So yes, it is my job to ask these questions and every developer knows they're going to be asked a lot of tough questions because that's our job to do that. Now, whether we vote to approve or deny it is regardless. We have to ask for certain improvements to be made. I believe the improvements of the trees would have helped and I'm always gonna do my job. Whether residents agree with me or not, I'm going to advocate on behalf of someone that can impact the residents and that's what I am doing as one council member. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counsel? All right. Sir, would you like to address one more thing? Go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm waiting.
All right, seeing no more comments from counsel or the audience, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye, and the motion passes six nothing. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 12, a request to approve notice of intent resolution to issue general obligation bonds not to exceed $5 million. This comes to us from Parks and Recreation, the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping improvements to Sheldon Park. Counsel?
I'll motion to approve.
Support. We'll go with Scheel. So approval from Budzinski, support from Scheel. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. I'm happy to answer any questions counsel might have on this $5 million bond project for Sheldon Park.
Councilmember Budzinski.
I don't necessarily have a question, but I will say, Ted, I know you've worked very hard on this, that Sheldon Park has been a project identified pre-personally as a priority for many years. I think it's exciting that we were able to think of a creative solution that is a no new tax bond way to improve a city asset that hasn't gotten the attention that it deserves to have gotten as one of the signature parks in our community. And so I am excited for the improvements that are to come and just wanna say thank you for your continued commitment to the area and I look forward to, you know, what happens next.
Thank you. I'd like to thank finance and planning and particularly Mark and his cooperation with PRDA. Without their assistance, this would not be possible at all. So that's PRDA really stepping outside the box and stepping outside their comfort zone as well as private donations from Bill Brown Ford and Wayne County Parks and Recreation for their grant on this. All those things contribute to this project. So we're excited to hopefully get this approved and kick it off.
All right. Anyone else on counsel? Councilmember Toy.
To, not the petitioner, but to the department, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to call you today, but I just wanna ask you a quick question.
Sure.
I've had several calls about Clement Circle and the overcrowdedness because it's hot outside. Surprise, surprise. So subsequently, with Sheldon not being open, not only this year but even last year as well, is there any way we can come up with maybe some creative solutions to get residents, I don't wanna put a time limit on them, but so that we can keep a flow going of people that wanna swim because that's a high population density down in that area and, as you know, and subsequently, we don't have a pool. Not that we can create pools all over the city because they're expensive to run and maintain, but by the same token, is there an answer to that as we explore, you know, having that shut down again?
In the short term, no, unfortunately. In the long term, you know, new splash pad's gonna be built. We anticipate this being completed and open for summer of 2026 with council's approval. I mean, that will certainly alleviate and that will become a free amenity to the general public. You know, I think it's difficult, right? Because Sheldon, for several years, we've been crying about lifeguards and that's certainly true, but obviously we have pool projects going on. The rec center pool is being closed where we might have excess lifeguards, but we also have reached a point with Sheldon where the pool needed to be completely remar-sited. So we could have easily spent the $150,000 and opened for this year. It wouldn't have been a good use of taxpayer dollars, but we could have done that. You know, I get that people are frustrated about it. I mean, certainly Clement Circle is busy. I mean, on a day like today, though, it wasn't busy. Sunday, it wasn't really busy, but there certainly are days that are busy. We still do have the lap pool at the rec center going on. We hope in about two weeks, we're gonna open up the splash pad back up at the rec center. You still have Botzford that's open. So we do have two outdoor community pools that certainly are available and it doesn't solve the problem at Sheldon right now. So there's nothing immediately I can do to solve that problem.
And we've never, have we ever approached Livonia Public Schools? I mean, they're closed for the summer, basically, and, you know, is there any way to look at their pools in their high schools or anything?
I'm sure they would love for us to look at their pools.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's really a viable option. We have not approached them. I mean, they closed down community ed. I mean, I've been here 10 years. I think the first year I was here, they still had a community ed program and then soon after it was pretty much shuttered. Pre-pandemic, they were still running some basic things like swim lessons in their pools, but post-pandemic, they haven't reconstituted any of those programs. I have no idea the condition at any of the high school pools. I mean, they could easily be drained and be cleaned right now. But again, I know...
Just an idea.
Yeah, and most people don't, they wanna get outdoors. I mean, I totally understand that. I would say Botzford has excess capacity and can certainly, you know, you've got climbing walls there. It's not everything Clement Circle is, but it's still a pretty good pool.
No, I appreciate the dialogue because, you know, with people calling, I'm sure others have gotten phone calls, it helps to have this talked about if they're viewing it or they're listening as well. Appreciate your answers. I'd like to see a little bit, I won't be here, but a little bit more creativity with the school system and working with them on various topics. That land sits there. We all pay for schools and what they do for our tax dollars and it seems to me that we could do some partnerships. As you said, I used to work for community services with Livonia Public Schools many years ago and it seems like we did a lot of interactions with the city and the schools. So it might be an avenue to explore, you know, again, if you will, and just a suggestion, counsel, as we move on to here and beyond.
Anyone else from counsel? Anyone from the audience have comments on item 12? Good evening.
Good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. Hey, Ted. I was just curious. I've heard that figure tossed around to remar-site the pool, $150,000. Did that go out to bed? Is that why we know that figure?
You have to address through the chat.
Oh, did that go out to bed? Is that why we know that figure?
Mr. Davis, would you like to respond?
Sorry. I'm sorry, Council, Vice President, what was the question?
Do we know what the actual cost to remar-sited a pool would be?
We think we have a pretty good idea based on the last couple of years remar-siting. Obviously, the rec center leisure pool we did in 2020, we did significant work at Botzford, so we feel pretty confident in that number. It's an extension project because you're tearing down, down to the gunite shell and then rebuilding up mar-sites. So we think $150,000 is a pretty fair budget number. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Hi, Deb Christensen again, Livonia. Sheldon Park was my park growing up as a girl and it's right next to some building that I really hold dear to my heart called Noble. And I'm really appreciative that the city's looking at redoing some things at Sheldon Park. It's been neglected for way too long. Excuse me, but I don't understand how we're making a plan for Sheldon Park and not including Noble in that plan. Thank you.
Good evening.
Frances Janis, Livonia, Sunset. I am aware that this pool that we are talking about evidently is the only pool in Livonia that has a handicap accessible where people in wheelchairs are able to utilize the pool. Is that correct?
We'll let Mr. Davis come back up.
Because if that's the case, this is the only pool, outdoor pool that we're able to utilize as a resident if you are wheelchair accessible, if you're using a wheelchair.
Mr. Davis, would you like to address the...
Yeah, sure. I mean, every single pool in Livonia actually has wheelchair accessibility by either zero-depth entry or by an accessible lift.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any more audience communication? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye, and the motion passes six nothing.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to running through the splash pad. All right, we're going to move on to items 13. 13 through 16 are all proposed amendments. I'll be looking for a first read, counsel. Number 13, proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended, Department of Law, to amend section 100 of Title IX, Chapter 56, malicious mischief, to modernize the language used in the malicious use of the telephone ordinance. Counsel?
I'll offer first read.
First read offered by Linda Scheel. Number 14, proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, Department of Law, to amend Chapter 88 of Title IX, sale of tobacco products to persons under age 21, to mirror the penalties of the state statute and tailor the language of the ordinance to prohibit the use of a nicotine vape in school buildings. Counsel?
I'll offer first read.
First read offered by Councilmember Budzinski. Audience, go ahead.
Yes, Christopher Martin, just wanna lighten it up a little bit here. Back when I was going to high school at Franklin, we actually had a smoking lounge in the school. I know that sounds bizarre now, but it just kind of shows you how things have changed over a certain period of time. What's acceptable then might not be acceptable today, but it was actually in the school. It was kind of a nice place. It had, you know, nice chairs and stuff in the building. So kind of, kind of a different, different time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb Christensen again, Livonia. While I'm not opposed to this whatsoever, but I just wanted to bring, and I'm not sure how everybody's gonna vote today on this, but I, when I was reading over the agenda, I noticed that wanting to mirror the penalties in the state statute and to change the ordinance, to mirror the state statute, I just said that, but when the city council had that opportunity to do that same thing for the nondiscrimination ordinance, they did not. And I just wanted to point that out to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 15.
All your faults, Scott.
Proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, Department of Law, to add section 045 of Title IX, Chapter 04, obstructing officers and city business in order to give additional protection to a person that is making an emergency call and to criminalize the act of interfering with emergency services. Counsel?
I'll offer first read, Madam Chair.
First read by Councilmember Toy. Anyone from the audience? Seeing none. Moving on to item 16, proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended, Department of Law, in order to regulate the number of racing pigeons allowed to be housed in an N2 neighborhood district.
Madam President.
Councilmember Donavick.
Are we offering a first read on this?
So we actually had our wires crossed a little bit. In the law department, we thought we were offering a report and recommendation on this, not a first read this evening. So we do have a report and recommendation. We don't have an ordinance prepared, but we will have one for the next meeting. Our recommendation is actually that this be changed to a 30 pigeon limit just based on the, the sort of standards for racing that we've observed elsewhere and the ordinances observed by our neighbors. But we'll have a holistic change that will also not be part of the zoning ordinance, but will be part of our animal control ordinance to that effect, prepared for the next meeting.
Madam Vice President, we're supposed to have a motion on this right now, so I wanna offer a motion. I just don't know what motion to offer right now.
To refer it to law for an ordinance.
Sure.
So Madam Vice President, I'd like to refer this item to the law department to draft and/or amend the disordinance.
Budzinski, support. Donavick with the motion. Before we vote, Mr. Fisher, I do have clarification. The attorney notes say no more than 20. I just wanna make sure we're clear.
They do and my understanding was that there was a request to law to come up with a recommendation based on research done for, with our surrounding, our neighbors who have similar ordinances in place. No one has an ordinance limiting to less than 27 and even that ordinance actually makes exceptions to allow for more than 27. Many ordinances are 40, 50, even 100 pigeons as the limit. So, but having observed and researched sort of how the practice of pigeon racing works, I believe that a 30 pigeon limit would both be reasonable and accommodate requirements of state law as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavick.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. And I know we have a motion on the floor, so I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds. I guess I just wonder how that will impact zoning and will that be limited to certain larger lots or traditional lot like mine that's small? Thanks, Madam Vice President.
Sure. So the ordinance that we're recommending will not actually go in the zoning ordinance. It will be in under animals. Were to go into zoning, the pigeon coops that have already been established in the city would be grandfathered in as is and zoning also isn't really an appropriate avenue to limit sort of the number of pigeons. It would have to do with more the construction of the coops, where they could be placed, that sort of thing. But we will be introducing rules in terms of size the coops required, where they can be placed in relation to homes, where they can be placed in relation to other neighbors' property, fence lines, all sorts of things of that nature. So it's going to be a pretty holistic ordinance, not just limited to the number of pigeons, but sort of concerning all aspects of ownership in this instance.
Thanks, Madam Vice President.
Do we have any other comments from counsel? Councilmember Budzinski.
So I do have more questions now that we're getting into it and that is, so would this 30 pigeon limit be for like N2 and RUF presumably?
It would be for the city in its entirety.
And I guess, because the only reason I ask, because then I feel like are we getting into trouble with RUF, with the chickens that are allowed for RUF? Because we don't have a current, do we have a current limit?
Chicken, so chickens are governed totally differently. Chickens are considered foul per state law. Pigeons are, they're, racing pigeons are a separate category.
An animal?
That can be governed differently.
And that is just honestly what I wanted to clarify where we're limiting things and...
And the motion on the floor is to send it, refer it to law. It's not to actually vote on the law right now.
I do. I just wanted to, I mean, I get a lot of chicken questions, guys, so I needed to be prepared.
All right, we'll go, we'll go to the audience and once again, this is to refer it to law. Name and address, please.
I thought Fred Jacoby, Parker Street, Livonia. This is my pet project, so to speak, and I thought that that's what we did last time was to refer it to the law, to write something up so we could vote on it today. 30 is, if that's what it is, that's what it is. I would rather see less, but I looked up some ordinances and Dearborn Heights has a limit of 16 or 15.
So Dearborn Heights has a limit of 15 senior pigeons, 12 pigeons between six weeks and senior age and then unlimited under six weeks.
Yeah. Okay, so what will happen with the people that are gonna be grandfathered in? Are they gonna be unlimited forever or can they keep their pigeons that they have now, but they can't add to it if it's already over the limit?
We're gonna refer this to law and Mr. Fisher will explain.
So part of the point of doing this via the animals ordinance and not the zoning ordinance is so that there will be no grandfathering. So the way that the zoning ordinance... So, the way that the zoning ordinance works, if, if we institute a new zoning rule, but someone has already established a practice prior to that rule, they are grandfathered into the zoning ordinance. However, under the animals ordinance, whether you've already established a practice or not, there is no grandfathering. The ordinance controls.
And that's what you're going to do?
Well, we're referring it to law, and then we will, then we still have to vote on the ordinance.
Right. So, I need to be here for the next meeting.
So.
Just before my second job.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, the motion on the floor is to refer it to law. Seeing no further, audience communication, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Council Mary, Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. And the motion passes six nothing, and that will go to the law department. All right. Moving on to new business. Item number seventeen, request to authorize an additional appropriation and expenditure. This comes to us from the engineering division regarding twenty twenty-four Westfield Avenue and the Harrison Road Water Main Replacement Project. Council.
Madam Vice President, I'll front approving.
Support.
So, approving from Donovan, support from Scheel. Mr. Lear, do you have anything to say on this?
Uh, yeah. So, this was a project that the engineering department went out for two miles of water main replacement on both Harrison Avenue and Westfield Avenue. During the project, we had a number of underground issues that popped up. We had some storm sewer that was not on any maps that we found and crossing on Plymouth Road that M.D.A. changed the installation method on us after the plans had already been let out. So, based on the difficulties and the additional depths and things that we encountered, we ran into an overage on the project of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-four cents, and we're looking for an additional appropriation and expenditure to close out the project and pay off the contractor.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Donovan.
Uh, thanks, Madam Vice President. Thanks, Mr. Lear, the engineer department. It's so eye-opening, the amount of money that is spent on water main replacements and things like that. I mean, you mentioned it's two miles roughly of water main.
Yes.
And Bidigiri Contractors does a phenomenal job, a local company, but that's three million, three point three million dollars, just for two miles of water main. And I can't remember what you told me before, you and your, Mr. Zalinsik, our city engineer as well, how many, like hundreds of miles of water main we have with water lines and, you know, big drain pipes and whatnot. It just, it just eye-opening, because we have so many residents here right now, three point three million dollars for just two, two miles. That's it. There's so many miles of this stuff underground, and it's a wonder how you pay for all this stuff, but thank you, sir, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Madam Vice President.
Anyone from Council? All right. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. And the motion passes six nothing. Item number eighteen, request to release development bonds. This comes to us also from the engineering division for the Hines Place Site condominium located south of Plymouth Road, west of Jug Handle, in the southeast quarter of section thirty.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Toy, supported by Donovan. Mr. Lear.
Uh, so this is a, uh, kind of a end of the project, uh, release of portions of the bonds for this development. The developer has finished the majority of the work, and we're looking to release the general improvement, the sidewalk, the entrance markers, landscaping, and the monument bonds for the project. We still will have grading, soil erosion, and as-built drawing bonds, but we'd like to get some of their money back to them as they complete some of the items on the checklist. So, uh, we're, we're looking for the approval to release the, the bonds that were stated.
Thank you. Any comments from Council? Audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? Oh, hold on. You'll have two minutes. When you get there.
I won't take that long. Lynn Mill, South Livonia. I drive by there every day. It is the ugliest piece of development. I know you guys aren't in control, maybe that zoning board, but they say people don't want to come to Livonia, yet so many houses, homes were squished into this little piece west of Jug Handle, and people bought them all. People are clamoring to get into Livonia. And every piece of property here in this city is desirable, even this ugly, ugly development that I have to look at every day, sometimes four, six, eight times a day as I drive by. So, I want to say Livonia is desirable, even this ugly development. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the audience? No one wants to follow that? Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, you can now take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. And the motion passes six nothing. All right. Item number nineteen, request to release development bonds. This also comes to us from the engineering division for Linden Park Site condominium located south of Linden Avenue, east of Harrison Road, in the southeast quarter of section twenty-four. Mr. Lear, take it again.
Uh, much like.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Council.
Yeah, so moved.
Support.
Support. Okay. Morgan and Toy. Go ahead now, Mr. Lear, I jumped the gun on you.
Okay. No problem. Uh, so this is pretty much the same as the last one. This is for the Linden Park Site Development. Once again, the developer has finished a majority of the items, and we're looking to refund the bonds for the items that they have finished. Uh, once again, it's going to be the general improvement, the sidewalk, the entrance markers and landscaping, and then the monuments and markers. Uh, as with the other one, we will still be holding on to the grading, soil erosion, and as-built drawing until they get those, uh, finished off and submitted to us as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lear. Council. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, uh, Mr. Lear, I have a question for you regarding these bonds, and I, I know, I, I've read all these paperwork and all the bonds that we have and that we've been releasing and things like that, and there's, uh, I, is there a place that we can go to look up where the bonds are and how many builders or whoever we have bonds on throughout the city, and how much we're holding of their bonds and how much we've released and so on and so forth? I'd like to see a list of something like that. Uh, you know, I know we have a lot of building going on in the city, and I know that we hold bonds and that sometimes people forfeit their bonds, and I'd like to know what that's about. And is there any place you can direct me to do that?
I believe, uh, the, I'm not sure if Treasury or Finance can run a report on, uh, all the bonds that are being held at the moment. If you want specifics on why something was forfeited, um, usually for non-performance or, um, you know, time limits, uh, there, you would have to, I guess, look, find out the specifics of the bonds, and then we could look up information for you. But a general overall of all of them, uh, you would run that through, I believe, Finance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from Council? Anyone from the audience on item nineteen? All right. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. And the motion passes six nothing. This concludes our regular agenda. I'm not even going to ask if there's audience communication. I know there is. I would like that the people that were in line, I think it was Mrs. Reggio and Mr. Martin, be allowed to speak first since they were in line, and then we'll go for items not on the agenda only. Start over here, because I know you were in line, and I shoot you up.
Thank you. Patty Reggio, three seven two zero four, Breton Drive, also president of the Willow Woods HOA. I would like to defer my three minutes, so Greg Ralco can finish his comments.
You can't speak. He can, Mr. Ralco could speak at the beginning of the study if he'd like.
I'm sorry?
He can speak at the beginning of the study meeting, which will start ten minutes after this one concludes. But he can't speak twice in the same meeting.
Okay, great.
It's just procedure.
To carry on with Mr. Ralco's comments, which I support too, because it represents our HOA. We are combined, um, three HOAs of four hundred homes. This is regarding the Sheets issue at Eight Mile and Newburgh. And to, to carry on with his, with the dot points that we're trying to, um, bring forward, um, in the Livonia Master Plan, future land use for the corner of Eight Mile and Newburgh, um, the parks, um, they have designated this area for parks and recreation in the future, not for a Sheets gas station. The twenty-year master plan for Greenmead Historic Park outlines complementary development in this corner of the city adjacent to Greenmead. Another dot point is section five point three six point zero five zero of Livonia's City Ordinance prohibits gas stations from being built within one hundred feet of Whispering Willows or Greenmead. Greg actually went out and measured it. Greenmead from this property is ninety-seven feet, not a hundred feet. Another point is there is still no demonstrated need and/or demand for the gas station at this corner. As we just approved, Costco is going to be adding pumps at their station. This also, um, this coincides with the comments that our residents have made in our very initial petition, saying that, that Costco should add more gas pumps instead of letting Sheets encroach on this very beautiful green property in the corner of our city. Additionally, environmental concerns due to the proximity to green areas near this corner and the tributaries to the Rouge River on the adjacent, um, corner. Additionally, ninety-five percent of our four hundred Livonia resident households nearest to this corner from the subdivisions of Gulf Ridge Villa, Willow Woods, and Deer Creek object to a gas station being built at this corner. Stepping back, if you weigh the exhausted lists that we've talked about tonight against the only reason why Sheets claimed that a gas station operation is needed at this corner is to fill a great demand, the decision is a no-brainer. You can argue on the contrary.
Thank you. That's time. Name and address, please.
Vane, I'm Herbert in Hollow. Um, so I just wanted to address some of the commentary that was mentioned earlier, um, and, and to follow up on the residents' concerns as well. Councilwoman Toy, um, you had asked Mr. Elrez, you know, to seek out the residents' input. You have four hundred residents.
Excuse me, ma'am. We can't talk about items that we, were on the agenda tonight.
I understand, but four hundred residents are opposing this, um, monstrosity, you know, to call it any other term unfortunately would be an understatement. Will you listen to those residents? To give everyone a synopsis of what's happening, Five Mile and Newburgh was the first site plan that was deliberated upon for Sheets that was overwhelmingly denied. They came back and tried for Eight Mile and Newburgh to rezone from the C-one district, which is a very restrictive district, to a C-two, which is a more commercially intensive district. They were denied by this very body, five to two, by a vote of five to two. So, what they did is they took the back door. They went to the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and took their case as Zoning Board of Appeals, and tried to get a variance within the C-one district, which is a very restrictive C-one district, to try to implement a gas station, which is prohibited in a C-one district, and a drive-through, which is also prohibited in a C, in a C-one district. Um, it is, as, you know, the resident stated, within a hundred feet of Greenmead Park. It is within zero feet of the golf course on two sides. Um, it is within zero feet of the creek, which is a tributary to the River Rouge. Um, it is within five hundred feet of two churches, one that is on the Farmington Hill side and one, um, that's on the Livonia side. Michigan statute prohibits the sale of alcohol within five hundred feet of a gas station. It is across the street from a childcare center. It is, um, adjacent at the intersection of a one-way, not a one-way street, but one lane, single-lane street going in either direction. So, imagine adding four to five thousand vehicles frequenting that intersection on a daily basis. Um, and imagine the emissions and the runoff that's going into the tributary to the Rouge River. Um, and, you know, uh, Councilmember Donovan, you had mentioned the master plan being a vision for the city. This runs contrary to the master plan. So, in one breath, you know, master plan matters, resident input matters, uh, but in another, with the ZBA, it does not. Um, and then you had mentioned, Madam Vice President, that you're not able to overturn the ZBA's decision to take it up with the Circuit Court of Appeals, but as a council that appoints the ZBA, you're able to issue a statement of disapproval, opposition for the erroneous, uh, decision that the ZBA made. That is in, in, uh, contradiction to the master plan as well as the ordinances that are in place to protect the residents and to protect the zoning integrity of the city and specifically that, that parcel. And I thank you.
Thank you. That's time. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Jim Bigga. I live at Lancashire in Livonia. It was discussed tonight about the banners along Farmington Road, the little signs that say better built Livonia, and all sorts of other things that are going on. And I wanted to say I'm very disappointed in the local senior bulletin that just came out. This kind of reads like advertising. I know it doesn't say advertising. It reads like advertising. It implies, hey, we can come out to your neighborhood association, we can do all this, we can talk about the better built Livonia issue. Hey, if you're going to do this, talk about both sides, pro and against this. You can't come out and just say this is all one-sided. This is what it reads like. Everybody I talked to, they said, come up to me and they said, they've got yes signs all along Farmington Road. Nope, the better built Livonia little banners. Everybody says, every sign they see about advertising, hey, we got this better built idea, looks like advertising to them. It reads, it smells, it stinks of advertising. I don't know how much we spent on this, but if it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it would have been better spent doing the Sheldon Pool. One other thing.
Please.
No applause, please. One other thing, and I really want to say this. People want to know what could stop Phase Four. It would be a charter amendment to take away the city council and the mayor's right to sell and buy property or lease it. We've done it with other council, uh, other charter amendments. We could do it with taking away the right of you all to sell and buy property. We could make it a vote of the city. It'd be a hell of a change. It'd be a lot of work, but that's the only way, if we wanted to really fight Phase Four, that residents could make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald, three six zero nine nine, Brookview, Livonia, of course. Um, I do appreciate the city's, um, taking time, the city taking time to get information and inviting the public into the different, um, open houses and for people to have the opportunity to learn about the vision. Um, I attended the open house at the fire department, and I learned a lot. I learned that our firefighters are doing more work than they should and are very understaffed. Um, the thing, the thing that I found most interesting is, is that the, uh, the calculations for staffing based on, um, city's, um, population was based on a calculation from when Ed McNamara was mayor. Think about that. Ed McNamara, that was what, nineteen eighties that he, he was no longer mayor here? So, things have happened considerably since then. Livonia's built up. since then. Livonia's built up. We didn't have all the businesses, all the hotels, um, all the subdivisions. Even though our population numbers might be declining, but we have people driving in and out of the city every day. And they need to be taken into account of who our first responders are serving. It's just not Livonia residents. There's thousands of people driving in and out of our city. And we really, really need to consider that and change the formulation and get some hiring in here. It's critical. You know, you get guys over there, we're at the fire station here. There was four people that were able to go on runs. That's it. Four guys. You know, it, it's just, it's critical. So anyway, that's all I have to say today. I hope somebody takes a look into this and makes some changes because it needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Denise Michael, Lancashire and Livonia. Um, just to go on what Eileen had said, um, there, somebody had posted, um, how many firefighters Livonia has and how many runs they, they, they run now. So it was, they have sending, 79 firefighters. They have 14,000 runs now. Dearborn, they compared. Dearborn has 150 odd and run 14,000. These poor people over there are running to the bone. Okay. Um, interesting thing, working the coroner here today, there was a gentleman that had been released from the jail over there from being with the police. And, you know, we're, we really don't want the police department over there for several reasons. Well, I'm sure the people from Brookfield went and want somebody being released. He was walking up in the coroner and everything. And we finally said, can we help you? He's looking for a place. He was just released. He wants to, uh, uh, charge his phone. Where's the closest McDonald's? So when they're released over there right by Brookfield, they will be putting up with people that normally are on a thoroughfare, which was sad. Also on my agenda, I was at Newburgh Village today. Nothing has been done yet at Newburgh Village for their cement work, which was supposed to be the last job for the year, and it hasn't been done. As remember, I said, eight years, those, um, sidewalks have been marked three times. And if you were the last one for last year and they couldn't do it, you'd think you'd be the first. We already hit the Fourth of July. Summer's half over, which I hate to say, but, and we were told that they were going to start and they haven't started yet. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Um, we'll say I may be the last one. Uh, my name is Steve Betts, and I'm here on behalf of the University of Michigan Dearborn. And, uh, I'm the Government Relations Director there and, uh, started about a year or so ago. And, um, just getting out into the universe, or into cities that are in our footprint. And, uh, it's good to be in Livonia. My first job in politics, I worked for Congressman Joe Nolenberg when he represented Livonia back in the, the late 90s. And it's good to be back here. And local government never disappoints. I've heard a $150 million bond controversy, uh, more pumps for Costco and raising pigeons. Uh, it's, uh, yeah. Cancel your cable, just get the local TV. Uh, you hit the gamut. Um, but part of what I want to just say is that, uh, even though we're located in Dearborn, uh, their Livonia residents, uh, are a part of our community in terms of alum. We had just under 400 residents, uh, from Livonia, uh, that were, uh, students at our university this last year. And about 94% of our students are made up of Michigan residents. And then about 92% of those, after they graduate, get jobs and stay, uh, in Michigan. And so, uh, what we try to do is take Michigan students, prepare them for Michigan jobs to stay in our Michigan communities. And hopefully those Livonia residents that are attending our university will just come back a little bit west and stay here and invest in the community. So I'm going to leave some cards here with the clerk. And if we want to be a resource, we're a good neighbor to the city of Livonia. Uh, and if there's anything I can do to help, uh, or we can do to help you individually or the city as a whole, uh, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad we exceeded your expectations tonight.
That's been great. Thanks.
Can I give any closing remarks?
Well, I was gonna say- Can we just say go blue for a second?
I was gonna say, I'm a U of M Dearborn alum.
Wait, wait. You're on order.
I was just gonna say, I am an alum and a proud U of M Dearborn graduate and stayed in Livonia, um, as, having gone to the school. So.
Madam Clerk. Um, Councilmember Toy?
Thank you. I, I too am an alum. Um, but as you leave, I want you to shake that guy's hand right there with that cap on, because he usually wears Michigan State t-shirts. Tonight. And his name is Bob Nash.
All right. Very good.
And we love him. We love him. So don't harass him too much.
I will not.
Okay. Thank you. So go blue.
Motion to adjourn. Okay. Yeah. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Morgan?
Supported.
Supported by Sheal. I think we can safely show six. We'll be back in 10. So we'll start at 9:05.